Agenda tonight, one is an update from West Metro Fire District and the second item is the Youngfield Street beautification update. And as we usually start our meetings with public comment, we will do that tonight. If you would like, if you're a member of the public and would like to speak on one of these two agenda items, this is your opportunity now. I have no one signed up to speak in council chambers, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now and we will let you address the council. And if you are joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format and we will bring you into the meeting. So I will ask if we have anyone joining, wanting to join us online. It doesn't look like we do. So we will, we will conclude our public's right to speak on this and go to agenda item number one. This is an update from West Metro Fire District. And Mr. Goff, would you please introduce this item?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Labardi is here this evening. He has to have a few minutes of our time just to provide us an update with West Metro Fire District programs and services.
Okay, chief.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's been a little while since I've been in front of the council. I'm going to blame it all on COVID, but a little bit it's my fault. So I will commit to all of you that we'll be back quicker next time if Patrick lets me come in. But I do want to give you a little bit of an update on what West Metro is doing, what we've been doing since the last time that we met. And a few things with, since we've merged up with Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, there's been a lot. And I'm hoping that the feedback that you all get has been good about our services and what we do for all of our citizens. One thing of note is our current board president, and he's in his, in his, just finishing up his first year as our board president, is Jerry Castle, who was the former board president for Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District. So the takeover's been complete with Jerry coming in and taking things over. But I do want to give you a couple of things. One thing that we're very, very proud of, back in 2021, we were recognized by the Special Districts Association as the Special District of the Year. And a lot of that had to do, and that's all special districts, there's like a gazillion in the state of Colorado, water districts and library districts and fire districts and wastewater districts. And so I'm very, very proud of that fact. A lot of it was based off of collaboration and what we do, in fact, all of our relationships that we have with all of you and what we do together, because as we overlay our district over several cities and municipalities and towns, we have to be able to work with everybody because everybody's got a little bit of a different nuance to their community. And so we're very, very proud of that fact. So Special District of the Year back in 2021. Last year for 2022, we had an increase in our call volume of a little over 5%. So we are now over 41,000 calls for service in our district. And so that's a busy district. We have 17 stations, 68% of those were medical, about 28,000 of those, and of those, we transported about 18,500 people. And so now that we're connected and with Lutheran, although they're moving and we have to, we'll figure out some of those studies as we do with them moving. But with St. Anthony's and Lutheran, you know, we have two major hospitals within our district, and that serves us well from a standpoint of how we serve our community and how quick we can get our folks and our citizens transported to hospitals. One of the things that, that when we look at this is our call volume, and if you want to follow now, we're more of a transparent organization than we ever have been. So if you go to our website, westmetrofire.org, you can look up under transparency, there's a place in there called West Metro Incident Data Portal, and you can look up and see, now it's still in, we, we've got it up and running, but we're still continuing to develop it, but you develop it. But you can see calls and, and numbers of calls and where in your areas calls are, are going and stuff. So it's going to be an added tool for that. One of the other things that we found with all of this busyness is that we, as you all know, we're firefighter paramedics. So we're dual trained and we have dual responsibilities. So like our friends over in Denver, where they have Denver Fire Department, and that's all that they do for the most part, now they're changing a little bit. And then they have Denver Paramedics, which are a separate organization, they're under the Denver Health Hospitals. And so for us, we cross train our firefighter paramedics, and they're part of not only, on one call, they can go and be on a heart attack, and then the next call, they can go to a fire. So we find that we have a little bit better value with that. But one of the things that we found is with all of our busyness is now we have added two more of our medic units or ambulances with firefighter paramedics on, on, on those two units. One, we added here because of the busyness we found in Wheat Ridge, and that's over at our Station 17. And so what that does, our Station 16, which is just up the street from here, we found that that is and still continues to be a very, very busy station. They're our second busiest. Our first busiest is Station 1, which is just off of 14th and Lamar. And so in that area there, we now have two medics there, and then we have a safety and medical officer that runs on lower acuity type calls. But we still found by doing that, that we still had, we still had a significant call volume problem up in this part of our district. And so we've added Medic 17 in there. So that really is an added benefit to the citizens of Wheat Ridge on what we do. We found that, again, our, when you look at how we serve Wheat Ridge, so we have Medic 17, Medic 16, Medic 5 is close, which is up in the Denver West area. We have Medic 1 and Medic 11, which is just down the street. So we're able to really then concentrate on an area up in here. And so I'm really comfortable and confident with how we protect the citizens of Wheat Ridge with that, that type of an effective response force. Also along with that, we have changed a little bit of what we do from a medical standpoint with our advanced resource medic or our arm car. And for those of you don't know about the arm car, our arm car, we did a public-private partnership with Dispatch Health several years ago. And basically, if you think of it, it's urgent care on wheels. We make house calls with urgent care. So we have nurse practitioners and physician assistants along with our advanced resource medics on these units. And so the reason we developed that was we found that there was a gap in our emergency medical response. When you call 911 for a medical emergency, we come out, typically we have two things to do. Either we're going to transport you to a hospital, or we're going to leave you at home. That's it. But we found that there's people that are very much in between, that they may not need to go to the hospital and incur a costly transport by us, or incur costly medical bills from the hospital, but they needed some sort of help. They may need a medication, they may need stitches, x-rays, they may need lab stuff, those types of things you would find in urgent care. We found that if we provide that, then what it does is it fills that gap in there and in turn reduces everybody's medical costs dramatically. And so we did this public-private partnership. We've now switched it a little bit. So in the last year, we now have, and I never thought as a fire chief I would say this, I now have hired physician assistants and nurse practitioners, and we are doing everything. So what that does is the calls still come through our 911 system through JeffCom, and our firefighter paramedics still go on those calls. And then they'll determine if then an arm car is needed and if it's appropriate for what's going on. Our folks that are on the arm car will also listen to those types of calls, and then they'll maybe engage a little bit quicker with that. And so now we found that since we have, in essence, ownership of this, we can then provide a better service. So what this does now, it allows us a different avenue to help out with those experiencing mental health issues. We now are able to navigate better with that. With those experiencing homelessness, we now get to be a navigator for that. And we have really partnered with Wheat Ridge's leadership, city leadership, to see how we can really address this type of a problem. So there's a lot of things we can do with our arm car. And as we go along this proof of concept, not today, maybe tomorrow, and when I say tomorrow, in the future, that we look to expand that role. But right now, we think that we've got a pretty good product out there, and the response that we've had and the, the feedback we've had has been exceptional. So if you don't know about that, look up and look at our website and look up our arm carts. It's really is, I'm really excited about all of that. One kind of, kind of a side note that I'm also very proud of is one of our captains, Mike Binney, he applied for and got accepted to the Yale Public Health Program. Thanks for lighting your eyes, because that's what I do. It's, it is a, if you don't know about it, the Yale Public Health Program is world-renowned, and there's CEOs of hospitals that go through this program, and there are world leaders that come to this program. And our captain, Mike Binney, got accepted to this. And so he is going to, as part of his process going through that, and then what he's going to do for us, in turn for all of us here, is to help develop a community health program in conjunction with what Wheat Ridge does, what Lakewood does, what Edgewater does, all of our communities. And so this is one of those things that not many people know about, but it's going to be a game changer for what we do and how we from West Metro address our health issues coming forward. So I'm very, very excited about that and very, very proud of that. Another thing I want to talk about is that we, for the third time last year, we received our third time re-accreditation process. So we're an accredited agency through the Center for Public Safety Excellence and the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. And so there's, and I got to look at my things. So right now, worldwide, there's just a little over 300 fire agencies that are accredited. Does that mean anything to you folks as, as leaders within our community that were accredited? Do you know what it means?
Yeah, our, our police department and Parks and Rec departments, and we're working on public works.
See, and, and all that is awesome. And I tell people that, they look at me and they kind of give me the RCA dog look of tilting their head. But it is very, very important because a third party is coming to assess us, and we've gone through it three times. And so there's not many agencies, and your fire department is one of those accredited agencies. Along with that, we have a rating, a community fire rating from ISO, and that's the Insurance Service Office, and that has to do with insurance. But we are an ISO 1. That's the best you can get. So when you combine those two together, there's only 114 in the United States that have both of those, and West Metro is one of those. And I'm very, very proud of that. We were also noted during that process, our third time through, for some best practices. And one of those best practices, one has to do with our finance, which we just, our financing division, and they just got the GFPA award for our annual compliance report, the 25th year in a row, which I'm very, very excited about as well too. And then on top of that, sixth, sixth or seventh year for our budget. But with all of that, we were, we were cited for best practice, but also with our labor management relations that we have that really, really are a force multiplier for our organization. We have a great labor management relationship. There's a lot of buy-in from our organization on what we do and how we do it. In turn, what that does is really, our folks are really committed to the communities they serve. In particular, what we learned here from our merger with Wheat Ridge was that the community and the fire department are very, very much intertwined. And folks in Wheat Ridge love their fire department. And we learned a lot of that through our friends over at Wheat Ridge Fire, in particular, Chief Olmi and a lot of his folks over there. So that really helped us learn how to collaborate, how to do things a little bit better. So when we look at, when people say, gosh, what do you get out of this merger? It's like things like that, that we can't put a price on that are a big deal for us. The other thing that we found also too is that, as you can imagine, we have a lot of wildland exposure within our district. And so for a long time, we were, I wouldn't say hobbling along, but doing things to just get by. Well, a lot of the smart folks in our agency came to me and say, we really need to put a focus on our wildland and our wildfire and our urban interface protection. So in turn, what we did was we developed and made a new, created a new position, which is our Wildland Coordinator Position. So we have a captain, Captain Brendan Finnegan, who is really quite frankly nationally recognized for his wildland expertise and what he does. He got, I call it the Silver Boot Award, but he got a national recognition for what he does from, not only from a training perspective, but also from a policy perspective. So with that, we did our Community Wildland Protection Plan, finished that up last year as well too. And you can go on our website and look that up, and you can then see in areas where our areas of risk are and how they affect you all. And it's not, as you, what we learned from the Marshall Fire, it doesn't have to be a heavily wooded area, it's the draws that we have, or the, you know, where we have drainage areas and things like that. And what happened in the Marshall Fire with the winds and everything else, it really was a grass-fed fire that hit fences and then turned into this conflagration. And so if you remember, right before that, in the Lakewood area over at Bear Creek Lake Park on February 7th, which happened to be a Super Bowl day, we had something very, very similar to the Marshall Fire. Same types of conditions, same dryness, all of those things. The thing that saved us was two things. One is great firefighting, but two is, and more so important, was the golf course over there. And so what we found is that as these were sweeping through, those golf, those houses that were, or the golf course was in between Bear Creek Lake Park and a big huge area off of Morrison over there, that are, some are areas over there are multimillion dollar homes. But we found that had it, had the golf course not there and jumped or embers come in there, we would have something very similar to the Marshall Fire. And when I say luckily the golf course stopped us, if you, if you, if you see any damage over there, it's in there. They found a bunch of my golf balls in those areas, but in the drainage areas and things like that, they found that that's where it burned. But when it got to the fairways, even though it was in February and it wasn't very green, it stopped. And that's because of the mitigation, or if you will, the mowing. So when we talked to our city partners and they go, what can we do for this? We say, we need you to mow areas to help us out. And we found that those types of things really help out from a mitigation standpoint. And so what Wheat Ridge is doing, what Lakewood's doing, what Edgewater is doing, what Ken Carroll is doing, Willow Springs is really now taking a closer look at that and helping out. But now having this Wildland Coordinator, we are able now to put a huge focus on that and have a more coordinated effort. So there's a lot going on at West Metro. We've been very, very busy. We value, and I can't, when I say value, I under, I understate that, we value our relationship. Patrick's been just as about as terrific as you can be with us and, and things that we need and things that they need. We've been very collaborative on stuff. The mayor's been a good friend for a long, long time, which I appreciate. But this has been a great, great relationship that we've had with all of you. I hope it's the same the other way. And if there's anything that you need from me, Patrick and the mayor know how to get ahold of me. You can call me directly. We can work through stuff on that. So, does anybody have any questions?
Great. Thank you very much, chief. We'll start with Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, chief. I've, I've looked at your website. You guys have a great interactive website that identifies areas. The, the one question I have though is, when it comes to the other communities, including the county, is everybody, I guess, on the, have the same criteria? Or does one municipality, I guess, kind of control the other, the, either, or either the district controls the municipality, or the municipality controls the fire district as far as what is allowed or not allowed, if that makes sense?
So from like a, like from a fire code perspective, is that what you're thinking? Or just in general?
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm thinking, you know, not just about housing, but also the landscape. Like you mentioned, the nature of grasses. So if, if the city of Wheat Ridge says, you know, hey, you only need to mow, you know, the, the staff is reviewing the plans and you only need to mow it within two feet, but the fire district says, no, you need to mow it within six inches, which one is correct?
That's a great question. So a couple of things. One is that you all have adopted the International Fire Code, which is part of us, and we've adopted it as a district. And so you put in amendments that fit Wheat Ridge. And amendments in Wheat Ridge are a little bit different than amendments in Lakewood that they are in Edgewater. And so to be fair, each municipality and even the county, and we cover two counties, Douglas County down at Roxboro, and then Jefferson County for most of our district, but everybody's different. And so we have to be attuned to each area of what may be unique to their area. Now, as far as who supersedes who, you all supersede us. You're a municipality, you have home rule, this is your place. We can come in and we can help with, to advise and to do all that. But you're the only ones that can say this is how it is. Because I, I honestly, I can't, I don't have any, any avenue for me to hold somebody accountable. Meaning you all, if you say you, if you're not, if you're not doing this, we can find you. You have ordinances. We don't have that ability. So we rely on all of you. And, and you guys have been a great partner about working with us on, so that we're consistent with each other. And so we, we really haven't had too many, when I say problems. There are other areas, when you look at, like our responses that we have are very similar throughout all, we've been able to come together that, that our responses are very, very similar for each of the municipalities. I will say that we've talked to have a regional approach from what it looks like for those experiencing homelessness. Patrick's been a great leader with that for us as well, because, you know, what we do in Wheat Ridge, we try, I say, let's have a regional approach, because then it's very difficult to figure out, if Wheat Ridge does it one way, and Lakewood does it another, and the county does it another way, that makes it then more difficult. And so we're working on, I think, long-range plans for that. We have a short-range plan in place that everybody's agreed to, but it's, but we collaborate really well on that. But, but in, if, if the, if the city, if the, if the city said this is how it's going to be, that's how it's going to be. Does that answer your question? Or did you need more?
No, that kind of answered my question. And it seems a little, something that the state, when we had Senator Danielson come and talk about trying to have a statewide kind of approach, was something that was kind of brought up. And, and I, I understand that it sounds like different municipalities can have, maybe conflicting is too harsh a word, but, but definitely a different approach to, to what is called for between that and the fire district. And that, that, you know, I guess my question's, I don't need an answer, but just, you know, do we all need to be kind of on the same page?
There, there is a little bit, so to, just to go further, the state does, from the, from the, from the fire commission, that's a statewide fire commission. It's not, lately they've been, they've, they've had their focus on more wildland things, but really their intent over a long term is not just wildland. But they are, but they're, one of the recommendations is to have a statewide, at least a wildland building type of a code. That's a statewide thing. And I, and I get where, excuse me, some of that is problematic for municipalities being home rule. But also too is, we've got to put something in place somewhere to have at least on something like that. Because what's happening is, is so take the Marshall Fire, we're getting called on the Marshall Fire. So this, in essence, assets around the state are getting called into there. So if I'm taking assets away from your community, then why isn't that community at least trying to have things in place to alleviate that? So that's why I'm supportive of those, of those changes, but at a minimum level. I don't, I don't think we need to have it heavy-handed and say this is how it's going to be on a loss set, but I think in generalities.
Thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck.
Thanks. I had one question, but now I have two questions just from, just from that recent conversation that you guys had. So question, I, I have, I just know that some like fires, like Boulder has Boulder Rural, and then they have their separate fire departments. Is the Wildland Department, is that, like, is that part of West Metro and taking the place of like a Boulder Rural?
No. So Boulder Rural is, is a fire protection district just like we are.
Okay.
They're just in a different part. They're just in a different part of the Boulder area. The city, the, so the city and county of Boulder, and city and county, the city of Boulder has their municipal fire department. And then Boulder Rural is, is like we are, they're, they're a fire district. So for us, for our wildland team, so, so for West Metro, you know, we, we cover all the way up to I-70, all the way down to, down to Roxboro State Park. So 108 square miles. And so we overlap or lay over, you know, three cities, two counties, several towns, villages, a valley, Ken Carroll Valley. But anyway, so, so we overlay them. So it's different. And so they're, the Boulder Fires are municipality, Boulder Rural is a...
It's just a separate district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate organization, everything. Now, under us, you know, we have a wildland team, a tech rescue team, a dive rescue team. We have a hazardous materials team. So there's a lot of specialties within West Metro that you, that you all are, is accessible by everybody here.
Thanks. And that was one of the questions I just had for tonight coming into our conversation was how we were, you know, getting, preparing ourselves for wildland and that type of fires. Cause I know everybody in, in Colorado now after the Marshall Fire, anytime we hear any inkling or we see high winds, everybody gets pretty nervous. So I just really appreciate the report out on all of that this evening. My other question was about just if the people who work for the fire department are able to afford to live in Wheat Ridge. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we, we just most recently have adopted an affordable housing plan and to some of the things that you spoke about tonight, we love our firefighters and everybody who makes the fire department work in Wheat Ridge. And we really want to make sure that people who work in Wheat Ridge can live in Wheat Ridge. So if you could just talk a little bit about the wage and affordability?
So I appreciate that. That's such a great question that gets lost in a lot of, of things that are happening. Because it's, it's, it's important for our organization to be part of the community. But it's also important for our community to be part of our organization. And so we have a lot of folks that live in Wheat Ridge. But you know, it's, and our, I will say that we just renegotiated our labor contract. And one of the things that we talked about was how much inflation has gone up in the last 10-plus years. And so fortunately, we've been able to keep up with that. But what, what a lot of citizens don't understand or realize is that, that I have to compete with the business world and all the other fire departments on top of that. And so where, you know, wages have gone up, but we've put in some things that, that make it more attractive for our folks to be here, including we just changed our maternity policy. And so our female firefighters, if they have a child and give birth, we will give them 60 shifts off. That's, that's six months, in essence. And they don't have to use sick leave and they don't have to use vacation or like that. They don't, they, they'll get that time off and they get paid. So we think that from an attractive standpoint, that gets people that want to be here and work with us at West Metro. So that kind of offsets a little bit of some of the, the pay that we have. And our pay's competitive. But when you look at then housing and what that's done, anytime that we can, cause I, I've had to, it was a federal program, one of our firefighters applied for, and it was just like that, it was for, for housing and the federal government paid a portion of it. So, but I had to write a letter for him. And I think that where I was more than happy to do that, why do we have to do that? As opposed to what you folks are doing and trying to create that? And really helps out. It's the same thing with our school teachers. And I get to say this, I used to be a school teacher before I got into fire, so I get all of that. You know, our school teachers should be paid what our athletes get paid, the stuff that they have to go through and everything like that. And that's, that's my commentary on it. But, so when you look at all of these, what you're doing, I applaud, and, and that will help then, you know, make our, our community even stronger because, you know, if you all, you can get this, is if in your neighborhood there's a firefighter, everybody knows there's a firefighter in the neighborhood. And they get calls and they get, you know, can you come over and check my kid or can you, which we're all happy to do those types of things. But it just strengthens those neighborhoods and it strengthens those communities. So the more that we can have affordable housing for our folks, cause I mean, even though our folks get paid well and they have good benefits and things like this, you know, they're, they're still two-income families or they, we're finding that where we have to, you know, call back people because somebody might be sick and call them back. They, they can't take it because they go, my spouse is working and I need to take care of the kids. Because they need to, you know, what, what daycare costs are. And so it's just, it's, it's nutty. So I, I'm very much on board that. Whatever way we can do to help facilitate those things, please use us to, to help with that.
Thank you so much. And just, it's really nice to meet you. I don't think we've met before. So I'm Val. And also the, that's, my, my best friend worked for Boulder Rural, that's why I was asking my question, but came back from maternity leave and wasn't ready to come back because it's such a physical job. She ended up moving into like the private sector, doing this, this kind of work, training folks up. But that's so great that West Metro has, is offering basically six months maternity leave. So just thank you for that.
Does she hate her job now? Cause well, tell her about our...
Go snap her back.
She's the best. She's an engineer.
I'm all in. So I appreciate that.
Cool.
Counselor, Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. And thank you for being here and presenting. I'm actually within the Arvada Fire District, so, but we work closely with West Metro for the carnation parade and we appreciate all of your help with that. And I am one of those folks that have actually a West Metro firefighter living right next door. And he has been wonderful and his wife is actually an ICU nurse at St. Anthony. So during, during COVID, he dressed up for my then five-year-old. My goodness, he just turned eight. So, so my then five-year-old's birthday party and, and gave out stickers to my youngest and my oldest and my niece that happened to come by. And so it really does strengthen a neighborhood and it's great knowing that he's next door if, if ever I need anything. Along the same lines of what Councilmember Nosler Beck was asking, I'm perusing your website actually and very accessible and user-friendly, but I am not noticing any job postings. So I'm assuming that you are not having any labor shortages? Are you not suffering like most of the rest of the industries?
So I appreciate that question. That's really good insight. So the, the reason there's not job openings is because we, we had a, a hiring process for our firefighters last year, or yeah, last year, a year ago. And so typically we do it every two or three years. And our process is a production. So to get hired at West Metro, for the application process, you have to, we have a written exam. And when we did it, we had, you know, when I came on, there was over a thousand people that, you know, applied. And then we had 800 and then 500 and then this last go-around, I think we had a little over three or 400 that took our written exam. So it's a, it's a general aptitude test that's to the 10th grade. And what that tells me is if you can pass that, you have to have 70 or better to move on. So if you can pass that, then typically you can do okay, at, at minimum, okay at paramedic school. Cause we put all our people through paramedic school. So from there, then you have to do a physical ability test and pass that at 70. And then from there, you go on to oral interviews, oral, our oral boards. And then you're put on a list. And so we are now going through our list and to get typically at the first part of our list, to get every firefighter, typically it's, it's wherever we hire one, we have to go through two on the list. Now we're at three and four on the list. And so because of this length that it takes to, that we're going deeper into our list one, and two, that it's, it's, it's so long, so let's see you to do really well on our test. You can't come back for another three years for our test. So we're in the process now, I've got a group of our folks looking at this and we may revamp our process to make it, in essence, more of a perpetual list. That people can take an acuplacer test so they don't have to come to Lakewood, Colorado, to our, to our area, to our headquarters to take our written exam. So if they do an acuplacer test, which is for community colleges, they can take it anywhere around, around the nation. And then from there, if we can do a physical ability test and it's good for, let's say, a year, their, their scores, then what we can do is then we can take it off and we won't, we're looking at a way that we don't, we don't rank everybody, but we do a randomizing. It's, it's a doctor firefighter, or fire chief that's in Georgia developed an algorithm to take bias out of, out of who we hire. Meaning, if we have, if people can pass their written exam, if you will, and their physical ability, that means they can be a firefighter. So we put them in this, we put them all in this thing and then this randomizer, based on our diversity for our community, spits out, and then who's on the list spits out, we need 20 firefighters, it spits out 20 firefighters, and then we'll put it through processes. So we're trying to figure out a way to take less bias out, have more people that are current and they don't have to wait a long time. So that, a long answer to your question is that we don't, firefighters don't have openings, but I think you'll see something at least tweaked or changed in the next several months that we're looking at. But we will have civilian or our support staff, we do, I think we might have some coming up.
So would you say that the fire department is adequately staffed?
Oh yeah, 100% today it's adequately staffed. But again, I'm getting concerned about long-term. But there's, there's agencies around us and across the country that don't have people's. And so we don't have, we don't have, we've had some mandatory overtimes because we may have been short. Those have been very, very little, like a handful last year. There's fire departments that are doing mandatory overtimes and also closing stations or rounding out stations because they don't have the personnel. But we are, we're good for right now.
And so a lot of these calls for service are overwhelmingly emergency medical service related as opposed to actual fire-related calls? When did that shift happen or has it always been that way?
So, quite honestly, so when West Metro, or when Lakewood Fire Protection District and Bancroft Fire Protection District merged up back in the 90s, both predecessor agencies, Bancroft and Lakewood, had what we call fire-based EMS. They have what we have now, paramedics, they both did transport. And so we've been doing this for, I bet, almost 50 years. And during that time, the vast, always is the vast majority of calls have been emergency medical calls.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you. Another thing that I have seen, I live in kind of a, what you would call a solid neighborhood. A lot of people have security systems. So I see the fire trucks come out and parade around the houses to check, to see if, you know, the security company, somehow it went off or whatever like that. And you walk around the houses and look to see if people are okay, you know? So that's very beneficial.
Yeah, we, we've learned not to break in right away.
That's a good idea.
That's why you have the axe.
Yeah, we, we can if we need to, but we'll, we'll try to be judicious if, if there's nobody at home on that.
Yeah, yeah. I know. I've seen that happen when, one time you did go into a house and you looked on a calendar and said, oh, this person's at Arvada Center tonight or something, you know? And somehow the alarm went off. But, you know, you followed up or whatever and, and it's just added benefit for the security because there are a lot of people who do live by themselves, you know? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Chief, I had one real quick question. You know, Proposition 1, 2, 3 passed last year to provide additional funding for affordable housing. As part of that, as part of that piece of legislation, there was a mandate that building departments and the approval process for plans and permits were, were within a specified sort of timeframe. And I wanted to just sort of make sure, we've had good luck with you and your department in, in turning out your plan reviews, but that's, that's all on, on, on top of the, in good shape?
Yeah, so, and that's a good question. We have, we did during COVID and around that time, we had some, some changes within our organization. Our Deputy Chief of Life Safety, Bruce Crawl, who'd been in there for quite some time, retired. And so with that transition, there was a little bit of, I'm going to say lag and learning curve that went with that. But now Kelly Brooks, who was the Fire Marshal in Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, is our Fire Marshal. And so, and I mean, I say it's West Metro's, ours, yours as well. And so he's put together a really good program. We're looking at, we do contract some out. We're in the process of hiring another plan reviewer. So I think where we're on top of, we're much better, we're much, in a much better place than where we were. So we're producing those and, and we're completing those in a, in a timely manner. I think it's about, last I checked, was about two to three weeks on most projects. And, and typically if the builder is keeping up with what they're supposed to and what our suggestions, and if they get with us early, it's typically a quick turnaround time. But what you guys do from the building department perspective and then in conjunction with us, it's a, it's been a terrific relationship. I wish some of our other places would be as good as this.
Okay, great. Well, we, we have our team here and we think they do a great, a great job, so.
Yeah, I, I agree on that.
Any, any further questions for the Chief? Very, very great presentation, Chief. We appreciate you coming in. We appreciate your officers and your, and your ability to keep our citizens safe.
Thank you very much. And like I said, if you have any questions or want to chat or whatever, just get ahold of me and we can do that, so.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thanks, you guys, I appreciate it.
Chief, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, with that, we will move to our agenda item number two. This is the Youngfield Beautification Project Update. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, we've been working for quite some time to beautify the Youngfield Corridor in between Apple Shopping Center and our new Clear Creek Crossing development. Fortunately, we, because of the urban renewal funding, we have about $5 million allocated for this project. So it's always good to have funding in place and not just put a plan together. But we did a conceptual plan a couple of years ago and, and we're in the middle of final, final planning process right now. And Jordan Jeffries, one of our civil engineers, is here. He's the lead project manager on this project. And of course, we have the rest of our staff here, but I'll let Jordan introduce. And then we have a couple of our consultants, I believe, online.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Jeffries. I'm a civil engineer in the Community Development Department. Thanks for having me tonight. I am also managing the Youngfield Street Beautification Project. And we have a couple people from our consultant team on the Zoom call who are able to answer questions after this short presentation. Going to provide a brief update on the project and talk about our theme selection process. Just a quick background on the project, we're focused primarily on aesthetic improvements on Youngfield Street from about 30th Avenue to 40th Avenue. Improvements are primarily on the west side of Youngfield Street between Youngfield and I-70, mostly within seat out right of way. So as you know, there's been a lot of development out here the past few years, Clear Creek Crossing, new stores at Applewood Village, just a lot of development in general. So this area is kind of becoming a gateway to the city from Lakewood, Arvada, Golden, and just I-70 in general. So really, we're trying to, to beautify... So really, we're trying to, to beautify the corridor and make it a more welcoming gateway, and just instill some pride in, in the city. Also, I will give you this disclaimer, we are not doing any street or transportation improvements, or any sidewalk or bike improvements along with this project, it's almost exclusively aesthetics. Understand there has been some resident desires for Youngfield Street sidewalks, and I think we're, we're looking for some funding for, for that project now. Just to go over the project goals briefly, we, we really need to work with C-Dot closely on this, so we, we need to understand the existing conditions, and what C-Dot's going to allow us to do. There's existing utilities in there, so we're need to, we're gonna need to work around those, or relocate those. Also, we need to make sure our improvements don't encroach on any clear zones, or, you know, have anything that will distract drivers on I-70. We also want to involve members of the public and nearby stakeholders, to make sure that they're involved in the process, and they have some say in what this is going to look like, since it's largely aesthetic. And then, of course, we've got to prepare preliminary final design plans, get our environmental clearances, permits, and then work with C-Dot to provide an inter-agency maintenance agreement. Because if you're familiar with this area now, it's kind of in a state of disrepair, so we really want to make sure it gets maintained, so it doesn't return to the condition it's in now. So these are just some pictures of the corridor, Youngfield. That first one is by the eastbound off-ramp, you'll see it's just kind of muddy swale. Looks like this gets used as a staging area, there's jersey barriers out there often, and erosion control devices. The next two pictures are the Youngfield Street Bridge, or 32nd and 40th Avenue Bridges, you can see there's some staining, there's some trash, just, just doesn't look great. The bottom row, you have the on-ramp, eastbound on-ramp, you can see the landscaping is gone, it's bare dirt, there's tire rutting. Same thing in the next photo, landscaping just in a, in poor condition, and then that last photo, you can see weeds and plants coming up through the slope paving, and some trash on the street. So it, it doesn't look great now, and that's what we're gonna try to do, is improve it. So we've got five key areas we're focusing on here. The first area is the eastbound off-ramp, we're gonna look to improve those drainage, drainage facilities, provide some landscaping, and in this area, we're actually gonna do some improvements on the east side of the street, this is the only location where we'll improve, improve the east side of the street. We're also gonna look to do maybe some monuments or towers. The second location is the area around 32nd and Youngfield, we'll look to do some aesthetic bridge treatments here, also potentially some monuments, fencing. Area three is the eastbound on-ramp, the previous slides show the tire rudding, so we're gonna try to improve this with landscaping, potentially some panels. Area four is between the on-ramp and 40th Avenue, we'll look to make some linear enhancements here, potentially fencing, panels, things like that, maybe some larger landscaping, trees. And area five is the 40th Avenue Underpass, which we anticipate will get a little busier with the opening of the hospital next year, so that will also be enhanced. This is just a brief update on the schedule. We kicked off in October, and we are just wrapping up the concept development phase, and that included our theme selection process, which I'll get into a little bit on the next slide. We're moving into preliminary design right now, and we think we'll have draft plans in about mid-May, and then wrap that up in June, and we're also kicking off our environmental clearance process with C-Dot, which will extend probably until mid-fall. Final design will begin in June, and then wrap up about the same time as clearances. And then the summer, we, we're gonna prepare for implementation, finalize our permits, and get these maintenance agreements going with C-Dot, and then we'll go out to bid. Looking at construction to start in early 2024, and it'll take about a year. This next slide goes into a little more detail on our theme selection process, so we, we kicked this off with a visioning workshop with the consultant team in January, and we had stakeholders from the city included in this workshop, and we went through some activities to develop four themes that we could present to the public for feedback. And then after that workshop, we, the consultant team refined those themes and developed materials for our public engagement event that took place on March 28th, we had an open house at the REC Center. We had about 30 attendees at that event, got some pretty good feedback. We also had an online survey from mid-March through early April, and I think we had about 140 respondents to that, so we got some pretty good feedback on our, our themes. After that, the consultant team integrated that feedback and made some modifications, and then they developed our design directive, which was included in your packets. And that document is really just guidance on how we incorporate these themes into the actual improvements. So I'll show you the themes that we, we presented to the public now, this first one is called Sewing Happiness. As you can see, it's very colorful, a lot of flowers, and it's really intended to represent Wheat Ridge's legacy of farming and growth. The next slide is called Expression in Motion, as you can see, it's also very colorful, a little more vivid, maybe looks a little more urban, but the focus is to convey energy and fun, and, and draw attention to the area. The third theme is Community Patchwork, and while it's still colorful, it's more focused on the people and the places that make Wheat Ridge unique. See Patrick in there? Recognize that guy? Royalty. And then the last theme, Plains to Peaks, it's a little more subdued, natural, but it's, it's really intended to convey or demonstrate Wheat Ridge's place in the world, which is kind of a transitional area from the plains to the peaks, and vice versa. So these are the four themes we presented online and at the open house, and attendees were encouraged to provide feedback, and they effectively voted by placing sticky notes on the different boards, and we came out with two top themes. The, the top theme, oh, thank you, was Plains to Peaks, with 47% of the respondents preferring that, and then we had a close second place with Sewing Happiness, 36% of the residents liked. So the intent is to have a dominant theme, which would be the Plains to Peaks, and then we will try to add elements of sewing happiness, a little more color, a little more pop in key areas in each location. This slide, I, I won't go through it too much, but it's in your packet if you want to see it, it really just talks about how these themes will be incorporated into the improvements, and it, it lists what improvements we're actually looking at making. So I talked a little bit about landscaping, and fencing, and monumentation, but we'll also be looking to add some hardscape, potentially some lighting, bridge enhancements, walls, signage as well. We're also potentially gonna be doing some public art on this project, we've got a meeting, I think, next week to, to get the ball rolling with that. So that's pretty much what I have for the Youngfield update. We also have the 32nd Bike Lanes Project, that is a separate project, but DEA is also a design consultant on that, so it's running parallel to this project. And it's, it's a good project, as most of you are probably aware, the 32nd Avenue Corridor is a huge bike corridor, I think it goes all the way from Denver to Golden, so we get a lot of cyclists on there. And it's, right now, the bike lanes end at approximately Xenon Street, so we're gonna continue those from Xenon under I-70 to approximately Clear Creek Drive. If you've been out there, you can kind of see in the picture, it's really tight under the bridge, there's no bike facilities, so it's pretty dangerous, I think it discourages families and more leisurely riders from, from using that route. So I think if we add these facilities, we can really encourage more casual riders to take that route, and not just the hardcore cyclists. We'll also be connecting to Clear Creek Drive, which has new bike lanes that extend all the, all the way up to Clear Creek Trail, so it'll provide good connectivity for those cyclists. And this is on the same schedule as the Youngfield Project, construction is going to be funded through a Dr. Cog TIP grant. But, yeah, so we should be building this in 2024 as well. So that's all I have for an update, happy to, to take any questions. As I mentioned, we have Jeff Snelling, who's the project manager for David Evans on the Zoom call, and Will Wagenlander, who is the planning director, and they, they'd be happy to answer any questions you have, as well as I. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Jordan, we'll start with Counselor Nosler back.
Thanks, that was really informative, and I really liked your slide that showed the timeline, I liked all your little graphics, it was easy to follow, thank you. I wanted to ask a bit about how much of an impact the beautification project, am I saying that, is that the right word, beautification? Beautification project is going to have on traffic on Youngfield, is that something that is going to be closing lanes, or anything? Do you know yet?
I don't think it will, I'm sure we'll have some lane closures, but I, you know, it's gonna be a long-duration project, we may occasionally have to close lane to reroute a utility or something, but it shouldn't impact the traffic significantly.
Okay, and then, so the way that, when I was looking at that diagram of the different sections, is it primarily on the west side that all of this will be happening? So everything along the highway on I-70 is how this works?
Correct.
And then, so then, potentially if we were going to get some funding for sidewalks, or bike lanes, or something, that would potentially be on the east side?
I think that would be the plan, yes, because we would have to acquire right away, potentially on the east side, so that would be the time to make improvements on the east. We are doing some minor stuff on the east side, right at the eastbound off-ramp, just so when people come off the ramp, you know, they'll have some landscaping, something pretty to look at. But yeah, the rest of the improvements will be in between Youngfield and I-70, all along that C-Dot Right-Away there.
Okay, got it. And also, did you go skiing this weekend?
Yeah, I did, yeah. It's not very noticeable. Yes, I know. Sunscreen? I forgot my sunscreen, my wife put chapstick on my face, she fared much better than I did, so...
Well, it looks like you had a great time.
It was fun.
Wear sunscreen next week.
And, and to add on to that quickly, Mayor, too, we did apply for a TIP grant for sidewalks on the east side of Youngfield, and to over the creek, and it was, it's on a waitlist. We didn't get awarded that one, we got awarded two others, but it is on the waitlist, so there could be some funding coming still for that.
Counselor Holtein?
Thank you, everyone, thanks for letting me join virtually tonight. My question is, I'm just sort of curious about working with C-Dot on this, since it's in their right-of-way. We heard, I think about a month ago, that C-Dot is not exactly a great partner when it comes to beautification and landscaping, because they don't have a lot of depth of experience with that, and so I'm just sort of curious, to what extent is C-Dot an agency that we're gonna have to navigate for this, or are they pretty hands-off, and going to be easy to allow sort of the, the creative freedom for our Plains to Peaks theme to shine through?
That's a very good question. It's not gonna be easy, we, we will have to work very closely with C-Dot, and to some extent, they're gonna dictate what they allow in their right-of-way. We have engaged them already, and it's an ongoing process. You know, they have an interest in this as well, and I think our maintenance agreement's gonna be key, if we take on a lot of that maintenance, I think that will be appealing to them, whether our Parks Department does that, or whether we, we sub that out, I think C-Dot not having to be responsible for that maintenance will be, will be appealing to them. Part of the reason we selected David Evans, as well as, because of their relationships with C-Dot, they've, they've got good relationships, and are familiar navigating this process, so that was key in, in why we selected them.
Great, well, I hope C-Dot doesn't get in the way of some really good, good ideas and some beautification that's long overdue, I'm looking forward to seeing this get started, and definitely seeing it finish.
Thank you, Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and I had some questions to you about the, there's some type of, I don't know, structure or sign, kind of like a half-cylinder, that was conceptual, I assume that was in the C-Dot Right-Away, and I know C-Dot generally doesn't like any signage within right-ofways, is there potential to have signage?
I think so. If you go through some other communities, there's signage often by the overpasses. I think, I'm not sure if it's Broomfield, or I think there's a couple down in Douglas County, I recall during our conceptual phase, we looked at some pictures of those, so I think it is doable, but it's, it's gonna be a challenge, obviously, we're gonna have to work around utilities, you know, we can't create any distractions for drivers, we have to stay out of the clear zone, can't impact any site distances, or things like that, but I think if we can meet all those things, and find an area where we're not really creating any problems for C-Dot, that they might be amenable to that.
Then, yeah, I think having some grasses would be really nice, but I know now we have an additional marshal fire criteria to also add on to that, but looking forward to the design, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you. So my question is around the capacity of maintenance, and whether we have adequate staff for that now, or whether we would be subbing that out, and what it would look like?
Yeah, it's a great question, a very good point, I, I don't, we shouldn't take this on if we're not gonna commit to maintain it, and we don't have the capacity in-house to do it, I would recommend that we, we probably sub this out in the future, just because of its location, too, along the interstate, I think there's, there's firms you can sub with that are, have the better equipment and, and capacity to work in those situations.
Well, and I think that this is going to, if, if this is successful, I think that many other areas along I-70 and frontage roads, and on and off ramps are going to want to implement some of this beautification, I mean, I know, I often drive the I-70 frontage road, and, and around the Kipling and I-70 interchange, and that area could use a lot of love as well, so I'm hoping for success in this endeavor, so that we can kind of, you know, replicate it everywhere else.
And we do, yeah, no, and it's a good point, we, actually, Will, who's on the, online, who used to be with DEA, he's now with, I can't remember the name of his company, but he's still working with us on this project, he did a conceptual design for I-70 Kipling interchange also, very conceptual, and we do have $5 million set aside from the URA bonds, if C-Dot ever moves forward with that interchange improvements, we have some money set aside to do some additional aesthetic improvements, very similar to what we do here.
Jordan, I had a couple of questions. I've always been a proponent, is when you get out of, get off of I-70 in the eastbound in front of Taco Bell, do we kind of have enough right-of-way there to sort of make a, make a nice presence into the city?
I think we do, we, we don't have as much as we'd like, but I think we have enough where we can, we can pretty it up a little bit.
Okay, good, and make some identity for the city there in some, some fashion?
Exactly.
Terrific. And then my other question was, on the 35th Avenue, or 32nd Avenue bikeway under there, is that going to be a protected lane, or is that a striped lane, do you know, or is that still up in the air?
So we're in concept development, we're almost done, right now, we don't have it protected, it's just striped, similar to what you'll find just east of there on 32nd. We are a little bit limited in the real estate we have under there, we're gonna have to move the curb, and move some walls, and slope paving. We, we could look at it and see if we have a little more room, I, I think we've, we've tried to put in protected where we have room, so I think there is one location east of Youngfield where we have maybe a block or two of protected lane, but, yeah, we're really dealing with limited right-of-way, we just, if we have to acquire right-of-way, we open up that process with C-Dot, that really slows things down, so we've tried to work within what we have.
Okay, and I'm not an expert on this, I know one of our Counselors Holtein is, is sort of the, the council expert on, on bikeways, so I will... I will certainly defer to her expertise in that. But if, you know, it's my understanding that protected bike lanes, even if you've just got little stanchions, you know, enhance the safety prospect, and I will see a hand raised by Councilor Holtein, so I'll get off of the phone here. Councilor Holtein.
I promise to make you not regret that. So it really would be great to, whatever extent of buffer is feasible with the right-of-way that's given, and, you know, to even look at, is there an opportunity to tighten the line width a little bit? And certainly utilizing green paint to indicate the awareness of bicyclists in the right-of-way. And I think the thing that comes up for me, and it's in context here with the Thirty-Second Avenue, but I experienced it a lot, like with Garrison and Carr, and with the Kipling underpass, is sufficient lighting even during the day, because what happens is cars go under bridges, and there's a little bit of daylight in the Thirty-Second because I-70 splits there. But just an awareness that even with good facilities, if the lighting isn't good under the bridges, then it can be incredibly dangerous because driver's eyes are adjusting. So I don't know if lighting's been evaluated at all as part of that project, but it's an important component for the safety, not just the lane design.
We know that we plan to include improved lighting underneath both bridges. I think that Thirty-Second Avenue Bridge, by the time they're done, there won't be a lot of lighting like we have before. So I believe that we do have the intention to improve the lighting underneath both bridges, Forty-oth and Thirty-Second Avenue.
Yeah, that's correct. Also, if you've been out there, you'll notice two of the piers came out, and that's kind of allowed a little bit more sunlight to come in, so during the day, it's lit up a little more, and our LED lights are currently missing because they took those down when CDOT was building the new bridge. So those will go back in, and then we will have some additional lighting, as Steve mentioned. Also, we are planning to do the green paint at intersections, so it'll be very similar to what you see along Clear Creek Drive, so it'll definitely have added visibility as well. And we will look at buffering. I need to talk with Public Works. We do like those flexible delineators, the little stanchions you mentioned, but it does create a bit more maintenance for Public Works. You'll see those around Denver a lot more frequently lately. I see them when I drive around, they're utilizing them quite a bit, but yeah, I think we would be open to that if Public Works wants to take on the maintenance.
Great. I mean, even if it's not vertical separation, like additional stripe buffer makes a difference as well. And, my gosh, you're so lucky, I totally forgot what my next point was, but, oh, I know. CDOT, I know through my work, is in the process of reevaluating some of its intersection guidelines, and so by the time this project's getting appropriately closer, do you know if you or CDOT are evaluating anything like leading interval signals or any type of signalized, controlled intersections to improve the safety for bicyclists and pedestrians crossing?
So we do have bicycle detection at those intersections, I think Xenon, Youngfield, and Clear Creek Drive. I don't know if it's currently activated, but we will, if it's not, we will activate it as part of this project, so we'll have bicycle detection.
Great. As CDOT adopts some of its intersection guidelines, I'd be happy to pass them along because they are looking at more controlled right turns and then just some lead signals, so when that comes together, I will definitely pass it on to you guys.
Great.
Thank you. Any further questions for Jordan today? Great presentation. Glad to see this project moving forward. This is, you know, really going to make a big splash in the neighborhood there, I think. All right. Don't see any more questions. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lauren and Steve, thanks also. Okay, that brings us to item number three on our agenda, that's staff reports, and I'll go to Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple quick items. Some of you have, may have seen, I know Mr. Ohm did, the city received a Starburst Award for Prospect Park. This is an award that recognizes excellence in the use of lottery funds for community and conservation projects, so very proud of that. We'll have a more formal presentation, I believe, hopefully on that in the future, but if you haven't seen that, that's fun. And then also, last week at conference at the Colorado City-City Management Association, the city received Program Excellence Award for hotel licensing program.
All right.
So congratulations to you all. We're right in the middle of it still, so a long ways to go, but they thought it was a very innovative program, so we are going to come back to council on June, June fifth, June 12th, I believe, to do an update on where we've been since we adopted that, so we'll bring more information back then. That's all I got.
Okay, terrific. We will go to elected officials' reports. I'll go to my back and see if our clerk has anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing tonight, okay. If you have something, raise your hand. Okay, Councilor Noslerbeck.
Just a reminder, May 10th, Wilmore Davis is having their big celebration with alumni for the last night, the last couple days of Wilmore Davis, so join the community for that. And then also, I used to work for the lottery, and I used to hand out the Starburst Awards, and that's really cool. Congratulations, it's awesome.
All right. Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you. I just want to say, for any people that don't have the internet, it was brought up in the mayor's newsletter, but this Saturday, the Active Senior Center is having a rummage sale out in the parking lot from 10:00 to 2:00, and they have a lot of good things usually.
All right, terrific. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Fuels Housing Authority groundbreaking with you and Mayor Protim Stites, and it was a really good event. We had three county commissioners also show up in support of the affordable housing. And then I also, I got my wife volunteered to help out the Wheat Ridge High School prom last Thursday and Friday night, and while I did help out, I do want to thank my District Two, Eric and Jody Nelson, put in a ton of time constructing all sorts of stuff. There was flowers and corn mays, it looked really pretty. I can share some pictures if you want to see some later, but it was, I thought it looked really neat, and I was really proud that what the high school did for the after-prom party for the kids. Thank you.
Very good. I don't have anything from Holtein online, I don't know. I had, I just wanted to report, I was really, really pleased. I think we had a great turnout and a great groundbreaking for the Ives Project over at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth, and was really a great event. And, oh, let's see, before I finish up, Councilor Holtein has her hand up. Councilor Holtein.
That's okay, I could wait till you're done. So I just wanted to share a couple of things. One is Local Works launched this really cool app that allows people to visit certain places in our city and use the app to learn a little bit of history about our city, and then when you do that, a little coupon pops up for a local business, for you to go show that local business that you took a little civic care to learn about our history as an engaged citizen, and as part of that, you get to go claim a free drink in places, and I really encourage folks to get, download the app. Actually, it's a web-based app, but you get to use it, learn about our history, get a coupon, and just kind of become a Wheat Ridge know-it-all, and those are my favorite people. So I really would love to see you guys out there. It's almost like Pokemon Go, but you're actually capturing city history and then a coupon, so I encourage people to use it.
Thank you, and I think West 29th has a little offer, if you happen to stumble across that, we'd love to have you. Let's see, I've also, Coffee with the Mayor, the second Saturday, is going to happen on May the 13th at 9:00 a.m. at Vanola's Restaurant. I have a Dr. Cog Retreat that weekend, so Mayor Protim Stites is going to sit in for me, so I hope you'll be able to join Mayor Protim Stites and get a new, a new, different slant on what's going on in Wheat Ridge. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So along the same lines of what Councilmember Holtein was saying, Local Works also has a great community calendar on their website. You can submit an event if you're a community member or a service organization. I have been using it to keep apprised of some of the events that are going on. Starting this Wednesday, May 3rd, there will be a Wheat Ridge Farmers Market every Wednesday from May 3rd to September 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 5650 West 29th Avenue. And then I am really excited to hopefully go check out the First Friday Opening Reception at Art Centric. So First Friday is an art event that happens in several, like municipalities, cities, regions. It's a way for local artists to meet other art enthusiasts and showcase their work, so I'm really excited to see that coming to Wheat Ridge.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any more announcements or things to come before us? Before we adjourn, we will be back here next week in a regular meeting at 6:30, and I hope you all will join us then. So if there's no more information to be exchanged, we will stand adjourned tonight. Thank you all.